Let's hold our meeting before we stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item of business is approval of our minutes for our regular board meeting, 7/21/15, and our special call meeting, August 4th.
Chair, I would make a recommendation that we separate those due to members being present and not being present during that time, so they can abstain if they choose to do so.
I'd like to motion to approve the regular minutes of 7/21/15.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Now we need a motion for the special call meeting.
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to abstain from this as well, since I'm most present.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, the next item is our confirmation and approval of our claims.
You'll take note of our claims. I know you've had an opportunity to look at these, but our total claims for this period Our Fund One total was 169,826.79. We're comparing this to this time last year. We paid 371,086.70. So we have a difference of 201,259.91 this year as opposed to last year. It's always good when the number comes in lower. So let me give you a little bit of an explanation for some of those things. This time last year, we did have some one-time expenses that we do not have this year that had to do with a new sound system in the elementary school. We did do a matching grant with our CATS program for smart boards. We had some paving take place in a couple of our locations. We had some accelerated reader books and some textbooks at the elementary school that we did not have to experience those expenses this year. Some other items that were different this time, there's some timing of payments. Our Eugene Wilson property insurance timing was different, 25,000 this year, excuse me, this period as opposed to last year during the same period. We also had the KISTA money that we're paying, and you're familiar with that, that it happens to be $10,000 less this year than it was last year. It's going progressively work itself backwards until we get that assessment paid out. So that's pretty much our claims report and our Fund 400. Our debt service total was 528,843.28. These were paid on principal and interest to three of our bond series. Are there any questions that you might have of any of the payments that we made during this period?
I have a couple of questions, and also I will be abstaining as well for item on page 14, as a check for my personal business. I'll be abstaining from page nine along the bottom. The hot water dispenser, it's like 20 pounds.
A hot water dispenser, Mr. Hood, can you, does that ring a bell?
That's right. That's right now that this particular, they've been, I'm pretty sure those are the ones that have been delivered, they have been installed.
Can you tell us what they are?
At each sink or something, or is it an individualized hot water dispenser?
Yes.
That's what I thought they might be.
Yes, and they're, they help with boosting the water temperature.
Tell us the location.
In the high school.
In the high school what?
Cafeteria.
Thank you. For dishwashers. We have to get that water for health department reasons up to a temperature. Thank you, sir.
And the other question was on page 11, the Friday backpacks.
Friday backpacks. Ms. Rogers, that's not an expenditure, is that, that's not money out of Fund One?
No, it's Fund 54.
That's Fund 54.
It was just a large number.
That is money that we received mainly from our grant with United Way and some other funds, and then, but that is the way of tracking it. So, yeah, very good. Good news is it's not out of Fund One, and that's the one we really want to keep our eye on. Great questions. Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments?
Do we have a motion to approve the project?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody ready? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item is our financial report.
In our financial report, treasure report this month, I want to make you aware of about four items here. Very good news in the technology front, we have applied for, and I think you've seen this before, but we're bringing it all together, and we're going to need your approval today. Well, actually, we don't need your approval on this particular item at this time, but we are bringing it all together. We have received the grant that we applied for with the CATS, and to refresh your memory, the Kentucky Education Technology System through the state Kentucky, and you see this come from time to time with matching funds and many different varieties. This particular one was for a grant in the amount of 308,774, and we have two areas that we're going to be working on, working on in technology. The first is to have access points in every classroom, gym, and auditorium. We do have a system right now that works pretty well, but it's not 100%, and this will allow us to be completely 100% in all areas that we need, the networking on our campus. Also, we will be replacing the wired networking equipment to increase our capacity and the power delivered to those individual access points. As you know, those would be, it would not help to have a system, a network system that did not have the power behind it. What happens here is a, there will be an amount of money that we will ask you to approve eventually, 700, excuse me, 77,000 to make a total of 386,000 for this project. Now here's the really good news. The company that's selling us the equipment will buy our own equipment. The amount, the top dollar, and there's no guarantee it will be this amount, but it's pretty good news. It'll be around 55,000. So this project will actually cost you around 22,000 when we trade the old equipment in. So I just think it's really a good opportunity for us, and it's really good news for us with the e-trade on the old equipment. I was pretty excited to see for almost a $400,000 project, it cost us 22,000, and look what we gained in the process. So also, in the treasurer's board, we'll be working on our budget to present to you at the September meeting. We will need to be prepared to forward that budget information onto KDE by the end of September, the end of the month. Our finance director will be meeting with our department heads and working closely with them. One of the things that I have instructed her to do this time is to examine every expenditure that we're making in all of these areas before we bring these budget items forward. We want to look at everything closely, and if there's any unnecessary expense there, we want to take a close look at those and examine those items. Again, that budget will be taking place at the September meeting. Also, our audit, we have scheduled that for September the 21st. Once again, it will be conducted by Smith and Company. Jason Strange, CPA, will be heading up our audit and once again this year, and who will be providing you those results in, later in the fall, probably at the October or November meeting at the latest. Keep you posted on that. Also, starting a new school year, as far as our staffing goes, we want you to know that we have all of our positions filled. We do have one position that we're working on currently, have conducted the interviews for a maintenance position, and probably will fill that position within the next seven to 10 days. Also, if you'll notice, on the cover sheet of your treasurer's report, you'll note that the verified cash balance per the bank statement, it is balanced, once again, of course, with the cash balance by fund per balance sheet. This is something we want to make sure that you know that we're keeping a close eye on. So that's all I have in the treasurer's report today, and be glad to entertain any questions or comments that you might have.
Okay, the next item is our superintendent's report.
Our superintendent's report today, we have some very, very good news to share with you. We're all familiar with our local newspaper that we enjoy reading every day and have a great appreciation for the Kentucky Standard, and one of the things, the many things that they do for our community, the Nelson County community, is they have the Best of Reader's Choice Award, and we're very excited to announce to you that we had three winners this year. Trey, I think this is okay that I announce it at this point. I know that it's coming out a little bit later, but I think most folks might be aware of this, but we had, we had three winners overall, and our first is, and Ms. Ryan, if you'll come with her, Ms. Lisa Hamilton, if you'll just come on up, and maybe right there will be just fine, and you come on up beside her there, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Ryan is her principal, and this winner is the best teacher in the Nelson County community. I think that's awesome. She is an absolutely amazing teacher, and her students certainly respect her, and just as well, her peers that she works with, her coworkers respect her. She, if you talk to one of her coworkers, they will tell you that she is a model teacher, and what you think of is she's a model teacher for the children, but what they mean by that, yes, it is for the children, but also for them. She often, she is a technology guru, and she is called on very often in her job to help everyone in the school. And so, Ms. Hamilton, we certainly are proud of you, we appreciate you very much, and congratulations on this outstanding award.
Thanks.
You're so welcome. Yeah, there we go. And maybe if we could, we have some folks here, if you could hang around just for a minute, and maybe we could get a picture of all of our winners together too. Okay, would that be all right? We also had two other winners, as I mentioned to you, and I'll just ask them to come forward as I announce their school. First of all, we have the Bardstown Elementary School, which was chosen as the best elementary school in the Nelson County community. We also had the best middle school in the Nelson County community, and so we have Mr. Paul Bowling and Mr. Ryan Clark here to accept those awards at this time. So you gentlemen, would you come forward? Sorry about the small one.
Is it?
It's right in there. Yes, it is. Congratulations, sir. So, Ms. Lisa, if you could, if you could come up. If we could just get a, get a photo op here, maybe a, go here, right there, that'll be fine. Thank you all very much. Congratulations. And again, we thank the Kentucky Standard for recognizing these outstanding folks. All right, we also have in our superintendent's report, we have another bit of awesome news. We have with us today Ms. Kim Case, the high school guidance counselor, and she's going to come forward at this time, come on up to the podium if you'd like, and first of all, I want to say to Ms. Case, you know, you're doing excellent work. We refer to her as the new counselor, even though she's really not new anymore.
That's okay.
She's doing awesome work, and she's got some fruits of her labor, and with her today, she's going to, she's going to tell us all about our Governor's School for the Arts and Governor's Scholar Program participants today. Okay?
Thank you all. This is definitely not about me. This is about these four awesome kids back here that I brought with me. They represented Bardstown this summer at two different programs. Three of the young ladies represented us at Governor's Scholar Program, and we had a student on each of the three campuses that hosts Governor's Scholar. I'm very, very proud of them because, as you all, if you know about Governor's Scholar, you know that this is a highly, highly competitive program. Only the best of the best across the state get into this. They start applying, the applications come out in September usually, they come open, and then they're usually due around December, and we send, we're able to send on six from Bardstown to the state level, but it's based on enrollment. So we sent six to the state level for them to choose. They chose three of our students, Larissa Heck, can you stand up? And Elaine Bischoff, and Haley Harned, oh, come on up here, this is all about you. They went to GSP, they were chosen, very, very proud of them. They're going to tell you a little bit about what they did at GSP, what schools they were at, their favorite things out of it, I think, and then, any of you, Mr. Ferguson?
All right. The one thing that did not teach us was public speaking. But I'm Larissa Heck, I went to the Morehead State Campus for GSP, and I was in the creative writing focus area. So I went into GSP and was really, really scared because nobody liked me, and that is the whole point. There is nobody there that is like you, you have to find somebody else different. And I ended up being best friends with a four foot eleven Muslim girl named Habiba. And I was like, who would have thought that this would be my best friend? And, you know, it just really opened up my eyes to all the differences in ethnicity, religion, you know, different cultures, and accepting those people for who they are and not what they look like, who they worship. And I don't, I just wouldn't trade that for the world, and I thank you guys for taking the time to speak.
Hi, my name is Elaine Bischoff, and I was at Bellman, and the thing that I liked about GSP was the people, they were really, they were just amazing. I thought it was funny because I was at a baseball game, I was telling my parents, and sometimes like ACT came up, sometimes it didn't. We were talking about colleges, and I was sitting next to a kid, and we were just talking about where I wanted to go, and he was like, yeah, I have 36 on my ACT, so I can go wherever. And I'm like, okay, yeah, this kid makes me as a perfect one as ACT, so yeah, the people there, like, people there are amazing, but you don't feel like you're in competition with anyone because we're all, we're all in the programs, it's not a competition anymore, but the program was amazing. The first night, the first couple nights really was like when you really got the feel for it, the atmosphere, I guess. If someone like did something here that was like feel like, it would be embarrassing like there, like people like laugh with them, like, I don't know, the atmosphere, it's really hard to describe. I don't know really a word to describe it, but everyone has that same feel that you're just, you all have the same mindset, you all have the same goals, and it's just everyone there is on the same road as you, and feel the same way about school and life. So just getting to see like different people outside of your school and just people who have the same mindset as you was really an awesome experience, so I'm really happy about to have that experience.
I'm Haley Harned, and I went to Murray State for GSP, and my focus area was psychology, but we also had another class, which was like a general studies class, and your teacher got to decide what topics they wanted to do that on, and mine was on happiness. So, you know, at the beginning of the five weeks, I was like, okay, I'll learn what makes you happy, like why people are happy, all this stuff, and at the end of the five weeks, I didn't have an answer still. And that was, I think, the most important thing for me to learn at GSP was that not all questions have answers, but it's really important to explore your mind, and it changed the way I thought about things outside of GSP, inside of GSP, everything, and it just changed my mind, like I'm like, that was really important for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Definitely the cream of the crop when it's senior class, and I'm seeing more from all of these kids, I feel like all year long, they're going to be representing us very well. David Ferguson represented us at Governor's School for the Arts, and I think what, you weren't at, you said Center, you were at Center, it's been at Tracy in the past, but it was posted at Center. Again, highly, highly competitive. The fact, last year, I don't know that we had any students at GSP, and we had one that was chosen, wasn't able to go, so the fact that we had three that were chosen this year to attend definitely is progress, and I'm a competitive girl, I've already started picking out the kids and talking about the application. I was in the classroom yesterday talking to my juniors about getting ready to apply and the things that we need to do, because my goal is to have more than three next year, just because I like to know a little competitive, I want us to have the most. I want, if we're going to send six, I want all six to get in, that's my goal. So, but David, again, he went to Governor's School for the Arts, he'll tell you a little bit about his program again, they only accept the best of the best, it's very, very difficult to get into this, so it was a pretty big honor that he was chosen.
Hello, I'm David Ferguson, and GSA is a little bit different than GSP, whereas like everybody at GSP is brilliant, and everyone at GSA is brilliant in their own way, in their own sort of art form. I went for creative writing, and, I mean, everybody's just perfect at what they do, and it's not like they came back any better than they were, but it's just, you find a more respect for your art form, or you have more appreciation for everybody's art form, just the work that goes into it, and you really just, any inhibitions you had about leaving home and being on your own, they're just, they're gone after this. You just feel so comfortable being in your own shoes, finding your identity, really. It's just, it's hopeful, just when you come back, you can get back to your own community in the ways that they taught you there. So it was just, it was awesome, it was a good time.
We thank, we thank you all for representing us so well, and representing yourself and your families, and keep us the great work, and we'll look at more great things.
What are some of the qualifications to get in at Governor's College?
Governor's Scholar, it's a pretty lengthy application that the kids fill out. They look at the whole student, they, they look at academics, GPA, they look at their ACT or their PSAT score, or the SAT, one of those three nationally standardized tests that's part of the criteria. Then they also look at the course selection that they've taken during high school up to the point that they apply, how rigorous that has been, that factors in. They also have to complete an essay as part of the application. They have letters of recommendation that come from someone within the school, but then also someone out in the community. They also have to list all of their extracurricular involvement, any of their volunteer or work experience that they've done, any civic or church affiliation and work and volunteering that they've done. Usually, I want to say the average application is somewhere between 12 and 15 pages. I want to say these kids, it was probably, I think Haley, yours was close to 20, 25 pages, if I'm remembering correctly. I mean, these kids, like I said, they start in September. The kids have already started asking me, our juniors now, about it, because they know how intensive it is, and they want to get on it and do it right, and they work on it pretty much from September until December. And David, I think you had to submit, did you go to an interview, or did you have to submit a portfolio for Governor's School for the Arts? They actually look at their art form, you know, it's a tryout, so to speak, to identify the really gifted artists in each discipline, and then they select them for the program.
Very good.
Definitely proud of him. I know his AP physics teacher didn't want me to let him come, so I need to get them back.
You're welcome to go. Thank you all again.
Thank you very much.
We also have at your playset and in your drop box, our fact sheet that we give to you yearly at this time, and I'm going to allow you to just produce that on your, on your own time there. We'll call your attention to the postgraduate, postgraduate information there, the entry level of college, we, and this was 14, 15 school year. Remember, every one of our college, our high school graduates this year did get accepted to a college, and this data is lagged, so I'm looking for that to be improved, at least on the entry level next year. So 75% of folks attended college, 3% went to military, 14% went to work, and I want to just give you an explanation of other and unknown, obviously the unknown were those that we couldn't contact, but some of these students are on mission trips as well, so I didn't want that number to be skewed and be any concern there. So suggest that you put this close by on your desktop, and it'll be information that'll, that'll help us throughout the year when there are questions or maybe responding to someone about a particular question that they have, so I hope you'll find that helpful. Also have one more item I want to add to the superintendent's report. We have a parent here with us today. Bill, what was your last name?
Fulton.
Bill Fulton, and Bill comes from?
Vermont.
Vermont, and it's a little different way they do business in Vermont at the school system that he's been at, in some different ways, and he wanted to speak to us today, address us with maybe a few positive things as well as some concerns that he has. Bill, I want you to feel very welcome, if you're comfortable at the podium, you're welcome too, if you want to stay there, you're welcome as well. So, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. First off, I'm Bill Fulton, I have two children in your school system as a junior school, one in your primary school, and one in your elementary school. We came from a very small school district, we had 98 students in our elementary school, K through six. Of those 98 students, I think we only had 2% that were on free reduced lunch, so it was not a very, economically it was an incredibly stable area. So I don't expect everything from you guys. There's a few things that I would like to say that you guys are doing great. There's a few things as a new parent, sometimes you come into something and you kind of have some insights into what's going on. The first thing is when we got here, we had no idea what was going on because there's no new parents handbook. They were like, it'll be in your kid's agenda on the first day of school. Well, when's that? What time do I bring my kid? Well, it's different times. What do you mean it's different times? Well, is your kid riding the bus? No. Well, we'll drive our kid. Well, which school? Well, there's a different time to drop off. So there was a lot of confusion for us, and we went to the open houses, and a lot of what was being addressed were things that people knew. So they would say, go down third grade hall, and we're like, what's third grade hall? So there was no, there was no manual or orientation or anything for new parents coming into the district. The website is huge, but it's almost impossible to find information you're looking for. I was looking for the engineering reports on the schools, couldn't find them. I was looking for, it's something I saw in the elementary school. So I was looking for these different things, and they just weren't there. Or you click on a link for the elementary school, and it brings you back to the district site, and it was just so confusing that we finally just gave up on the website. I mean, there was a lot of information there, but not really the information I needed. The football field looks amazing. It is a great football field. There's a 12-foot crack in the ceiling of my daughter's classroom, but the football field is phenomenal. As a new parent, when you come in and see that, you're like, wow, that's a great football field. What's going on here? There is no playground at the elementary school right now. I understand that there were some rain issues, and I tried to find the contract for the playground to see if, are we going to pay less because it's not done by the first day of school? No, we're not. So there's some issues there in how we contract things, where we're spending our money, and what we expect of those people that contract to us, and again, I couldn't find it on the website. What else? Parental involvement. We came from a school where a quarter of the students had a parent in that school on any given day. Here, we, when we signed up our kids, they filled out the packet, turned it in, nobody called. Went in on the first day, what can we do to volunteer? Oh, well, there's PTO. No, we want to volunteer in the school. Oh, we'll give you a call. Been a week and a half. No calls from the elementary school. Primary school's been using me, they're awesome, love the primary school. The elementary school, there's enough students there to where if we have a volunteer coordinator, I'm sure we could get that, that parental involvement worked up, but if there's no list- But if there's no list that say, hey, this is what we need, this is the times that we needed at, there's no way for me to go, yeah, I'll do that. If it's just, oh, check with the teacher, it's so, it'd be nice if that was formalized a little bit more. And what was the other thing? Oh, the security in the schools. And this is a personal note to me because it's kind of what I do for a job. But there is almost no access control in the mornings. And you group all the kids in the gyms, whether it's the primary school or the elementary school. With that, that makes all the kids in one area with anybody being able to walk in. Instead of spreading the kids out, instead of putting them in classrooms, you have the doors open and all the kids in one area. Your staff doesn't wear ID cards. There's no way for me to know as a new parent who actually belongs at the school. There's people opening doors, and I've been doing that at the primary school. There's people opening doors, but they're not tagged. It's just somebody on the curb opening a door for your kid. In an emergency situation, there's no way for law enforcement or emergency personnel to tell who works at that school if they're not wearing some type of identification, something that identifies them. And even worse, in a security type situation, I can say that I worked at the school. And if you don't intimately know everyone that works there, you can just go along with it. So, those are my issues. As for the good points, your property tax rates are beautiful. What, the primary school functions amazingly. My wife has been helping on this math testing. The kids there are actually ahead in reading and math than where we were in Vermont, which is amazing. They're polite, they're articulate, and that was something that was surprising coming to Kentucky from Vermont because we weren't expecting that the academic standards would actually be higher here. And the fact that my kids in the first week and a half are actually challenged is a great thing because as a parent, I want them challenged academically. Academically, it's awesome, but I'd like to see a little more go into the facilities, at least on the elementary school. And this is just a suggestion, but we had parental work crews at our last school where if there was a gap in the ceiling and there wasn't money to cover it, they would just ask the parents, hey, you guys want to come in in July and work on the ceilings? And we'd go in in July and work on the ceilings. I don't know how much involvement we can get, but it would be nice. Lastly, having the school board meeting at noon on the third Tuesday, you guys put yourself in a bunker underground and you probably get the same parental involvement. I want to be an involved parent. I want other parents to be involved. And I know that right now, most of them are at work or grabbing a burger and hoping they can wolf it down before they have to get back. So, a schedule change would be awesome, but I also heard that you guys have had nighttime meetings and nobody shows up to those anyway. But if you have them again, I can at least recruit a couple more parents. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Fulton, thank you, sir. You've given us a lot of good points and I can assure you that we're going to consider this list that I've just made and we'll do what we can to improve. You're welcome back anytime.
Oh, and who are you guys? Because you have no little signs that say board member, treasurer, superintendent.
Okay, I see what you're saying. This is our board chair here and I am your superintendent.
Okay.
And this is the board secretary, Tracy Rogers, and then Jennifer Schrewsberry. These are board members and you see their names along the way there.
That was one of them.
Thank you, Frau.
Thank you.
Jack completes the superintendent's report.
Our next item is approval of our local tax rates for 2015.
To refresh your memory, we had our meeting on August the 4th. At that time, we approved a preliminary tax rate. What I have in front of you, you'll find there, actually, I'll get to that in just a second. But let me begin with this. House Bill 44 covers all of our, our tax rates and also House Bill 940. But speaking specifically to House Bill 44, that's where we are provided with three tax rates from the Department of Revenue. And they come to us, these are solely dependent on property valuation and they provide the possible levies to school districts. And I think you're quite familiar with those. There's a document there in front of you, I think it's labeled as Report 1 at the top that will help break these three rates down a bit. First is the compensating tax rate. You can see, and just looking at Real Estate alone, just to make sure we're following along, is 75.5. The compensating rate is typically the amount of money that a school district received in the previous year. The subsection, in this case, the rate is 75.3, which you can see is actually less than the compensating rate at this particular time. And then the third rate is the 4% increase of revenue over what your compensating rate was, well, is this current year and the amount that you received in the previous year. And that's a 78.5. So, I call those three items to your attention. And then if you'll look down closer to the bottom of that page, at the very bottom, you'll see the exoneration. And this year, the exoneration is 0.2 cents. In the past, it was been 0.1. An exoneration allows the school system to recoup dollars that they have lost due to the Homestead or Disability Exemption Act. A person over the age of 62 can have their, if they apply, can have their tax rate reduced. And this allows you to recoup some of that money that you lose in that process. And then back to the middle of your Report 1, you'll see the motor vehicle. That tax rate is 53.1 and there is no option on that particular tax rate. And that will remain the same again this year as set by the Department of Revenue. So, those four, excuse me, those three rates are what we had to choose from. In our preliminary special call meeting, we set the rate for the 4% increase of revenue over the compensating rate. There is another document you have right behind that, if you'll take a look at that one, the generated versus the actual receipts. I just wanted to call that to your attention. I did highlight for you the 4% increase of revenue over the compensating rate plus the exoneration of 0.2. And that will, on the assessment of $8,244,782, you can see that we will actually receive, based on an average of past years, at $8,016,103. So, there's, there's $228,000, almost $229,000 that we will not collect due to a very small percentage that simply do not pay. You do have a 99% increase, I mean, 99-plus on collecting, but we do have folks, and which is a very good thing, on the, on the collection, there is a discount that they can receive by a certain date if they pay early. Unfortunately, we have a lot of early payers. And so, they take advantage of that and there's, there's about $3 million that we lose there. And if you pay by the due date, you still get a discount. It's about $2 million, almost $3 million there. So, as you can see how that adds up. So, I just wanted you to keep that in mind. You're not, whatever tax rate you take, you're not receiving the full amount due to those I've talked to you, this will be the fourth time counting email information concerning our tax rate. As I said, we, we did decide to take the 4% at the preliminary. I think I've covered reasons with you and I think you have, you have supported that. I will tell you, whatever this Board of Education decides, we will make this budget work. It's, it's, a couple of things I, I do caution you on is, is when you look at a contingency, a school system is required to have a 2% contingency. It's recommended a 5% by your auditors and, and the Kentucky Department of Education. And we look at that, we're very close to that 5%. And it does look like that you could take money from that, but I want you to be careful. That number, that contingency is inflated due to the recession. We have been able to use capital outlay funds as well as bonding money that's available that's not necessary to be spent at this time, but we have that money available to pay for bonds. And we don't have bonds to pay at the moment, then we are allowed to use that, that funding. And so, so that, what you see in that 5-plus percent is, is an inflated number. So, I, I just be aware of that. We do have some mandated raise this year and very grateful for our legislators and our governor. In the first year of that two-year budget of 1415, that 1% was covered. In the 1516 year, it is mostly covered. There's, there's still a bit of a deficit there, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 60%. I'm sorry, 40% of that full amount is not, is not fully funded. So, those are some things to consider. I will open the floor here for any, any discussion that you might have, but I'd just make this final remark concerning the tax rate. First of all, I'd like for, for everyone to know that this Board of Education finds it very difficult this time of year to do this job. This is not something that comes easy. It is not a decision that is made without careful consideration and sensitivity to the community and the taxpayers of this community. We, we, we think a lot about it, we give it a lot of time, and it's a difficult decision at the least. It's, it's a tough time for us. As the superintendent, my recommendation has been the 4%. I tell you that. I feel as though that I'm an advocate for the children of this district. It's not a popular decision to make, it's a difficult decision to make. And when I make that recommendation, it, it's, it's hard to do in one way because of how it may be viewed by community members as a burden, but for students and for the parents of our students, I feel that it's a necessary thing that we do. I feel it's an obligation, it's not a luxury, it's how we make the budget work. We didn't ask to be in this position, it's a position that we're in by, because legislators do not make this decision for, for local taxes. And we have to make that decision. And, and so, that's where I stand on it. And I open the floor now for any discussion. You are the voting members that will make this decision and I will support that decision.
Chairman, I have a prepared statement I'd like to read.
Yes.
Mr. Holskow, fellow board members and fellow taxpayers, I would first like to apologize for being unable to be present for the first and second readings of the tax increase proposal on the 4th and 17th of this month. My job requires extensive travel away from home and I was unable to adjust my work schedule. Despite an excellent case presented by Mr. Holskow, I will vote against the increase issue. I realize this is a contentious issue and it is something I have struggled with and do not take lightly. It is our job as board members to balance the wants and needs of the school district with the economic realities of our constituency. There is always a useful area to dispense the budgetary windfall created by this increase in revenue. We are extremely fortunate to have Mr. Holskow and his remarkable staff as the gatekeepers of taxpayers' money, money for our district. They are vigilant to the penny of your hard-earned dollars. The revenue increases, the revenue increase of the maximum 4% allowed has occurred 21 consecutive years. I have voted for this increase my first two years as a board member and may do so as well in the future. I'm not sure when the last time a no vote was cast, but this year I will do so without a doubt.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. We did have a subsection during that time, but your point is well made on the number of years. I think it's 2003 there was a subsection taken, but point well made and thank you for your comments. Other comments?
You know, I really appreciate the people who came to the tax hearing and as a board member is always beneficial and means so much for people to come to the meeting and to hear what they have to say and to hear their input. This is a difficult, you know, decision that we make. And when you look at the numbers, and I review the numbers, I just don't see wiggle room in our budget. And I feel that if, in the past, our, the board members hadn't been proactive in taking the 4%, there are definitely times that we would be in big trouble. So, for that reason, and I have to say, this summer, meeting with several of the teachers and seeing their enthusiasm and their fire for what they wanted to give the children and the programs and everything, which, you know, we're not even looking at that, we're just doing a basic meeting, as many meetings as we can. But to see that, I feel like, we, I, I just feel like we have to take the 4%.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 4% plus the 0.2 cent exoneration rate at this time.
And the 53, even though it's already set, the 53 on motor vehicles?
Please, yes, sir.
That goes without saying.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion or anything?
The scrutiny that we, that every body gives when they start to raise taxes is becoming more and more intense in the general public. There were times when I was on board, we'd have the meeting to, or public discussion, it would be, nobody show up. And, but now with the scrutiny that every body that read, that thought is involved in taxes is getting, we are, we have been forced to really scrutinize our expenditures, where our money's going. And it's been, there's been some tough decisions that haven't, that haven't been made and unfortunately, taking the 4% for X number of years has been it. But if we had not done that, as Ms. Schrewsberry said, we would be, we would have been in financial trouble right now. And we are compelled as educators, and I'm putting me in that educator college, to provide, as I said last night, the best facilities, the best teachers and the best attention to the students' needs. We are getting that, but unfortunately, this is the cost of doing business in a very competitive education community, called the schools that do not meet certain criteria are placed on the endangered speech list. They have educators come in to try and raise the grades and the GPAs and whatever. We are, been very fortunate not to have to do that. We've had motivational, motivated teachers, motivated staff, and they, in turn, motivate the students to learn. And our educational results are very, very, very high and we're expecting to do better in the past. And this is not done at bargain basement prices. You get what you pay for. And I think, I know that our folks in the community are very conscious of what we're doing as far as raising taxes, but it, it must be done for the benefit of the students. So, I feel very, I feel that 4% plus two, plus two cents is, is needed. And the money will be used fru, very frugally and put in the right places.
Hold it into both. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Our next item is an approval for the ratification to the amendment of the Central Kentucky Education Cooperative Interlocal Agreement, Justice Ed Campbell Cameron.
All right. Let me explain. You're saying Camel County, where is that probably? Let me try to explain. CKEC, Central Kentucky Education Cooperative.
Where is Camel County, seriously?
It's north, Cincinnati, I'll word it that way. And the Kentucky law statute requires that all school systems belong to a co-op. Years ago, I have no idea how many years we've been a member of CKEC, quite some time, as far as I know. We are a member there, we, our meetings are held in Lexington. We are a progressive co-op, we have currently 22, 23 members. There are other co-ops like us, and then there are some like Greck, which is the Green River Co-op, which is probably have anywhere from 40 to 60 school systems, and then KEDC, they're even larger and probably have a few more than that, maybe 50 to 60 school systems in net. So they're all over the place on what kind of co-op you have. And what is a co-op? Back in the early days, the reason for the co-op was mostly for purchasing items. We're able to come together and we buy train loads instead of a truckload. Paper is an excellent example, copy paper, and we take great advantage of that. But it has grown to where there are a number of items that people get on that bidder's list, everything from textbooks, classroom, things that you would use in the classroom, to chain link, to cafeteria equipment, you name it, and it's probably on this list. But to get on there, they have to bid it down and be the lowest one. So it makes it really easy for purchasing. But in recent years, that has grown, probably in the last, I'd say 10 to 15 years, we've become much more, especially in our co-op, I'll speak specifically, in the last five to six years, we've become much more curriculum focused. We now have all kinds of, give us the names of some of those, like yours, your group, Mr. Downs is-
Professional Development Coordinators.
PDC coordinators, and then we have-
Instructional School Leadership.
And then Mr. Boston.
Special Education.
And so we have almost an avenue for everything we do. And that special education part of CKEC is one of the strongest in the state, if not the strongest. And the other areas are really strong as well. Okay, I told you all that. Now what does that mean? It has really nothing to do, to do with you, except our bylaws say that a, before a school system can leave a co-op, they have to approve it in a board meeting. And before they can join a new co-op, every board of education that is a part of that co-op must approve that they join. I have no reason to tell you other than good things about Camel County. I don't know that much about them, but there's no reason for them not to join us, so we simply ask for an approval. And if you have any questions concerning that, I'd be glad to address it. But we're doing that, and then, and then we'll take a superintendent's signature for each of the 22 or so members at the current time.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Is there, are they a co-op member?
Yes, they, I think they're a member of KEDC, I think, is the one they belong to. So they have, they have completed the process of disengaging, and now they're doing the process of engaging. You see, and if you look at the documents in your packet there, you'll see that the Commission of Education has to approve this, this change.
Not that it makes any difference, why would they want to join this co-op down here when it's, there are no schools up in that area presently?
Well, their, their main reason for saying it is, for joining us is from an instructional standpoint. It feels though that we're very instructionally oriented, and curriculum is something we make a priority in this co-op, and it's really, we're pretty, pretty honored to accept them, and that is quite a compliment coming from them.
They're willing to make the drive?
Currently, we're the, we drive other than anyone else in the co-op. Montgomery County might be in a battle with us on that, but, but now they will, they will certainly be driving pretty far away. Okay?
All right. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? As far as we're concerned, Camel County's in. All right, our next item is approval of the second reading of our board policy update.
We've had this document in your hands now for, I guess, prior to, and at least 30 days since the last time you saw it, so we've had a chance to look at it. Mr. Downs is gonna review a few of those for us and then answer any questions you might ask. Yeah, I'll just let you do that. You always explain how they come to us, require and suggest it.
Right, right. We, we get these from our Kentucky School Board Association every year. They send out lists, and some of these are required action because they're legal, and some of them are recommended. And this year, we had 31 total, 23 of them are legal and eight were recommended, and then we have six of our own that we're changing. I'm gonna just kind of touch on a few of those just to make sure that we're all on the same page. For example, there's, in 3.0, that's personnel, and one of the big changes in personnel was they added the PGS piece in for the evaluation. So that was a big change there. Fiscal management was, was one, was a legal one also, where you have to have a code of conduct. When you're, when you get federal funds, in order to accept those federal funds, you have to have a code of conduct. So we're gonna be in the process of doing that to make sure that we are in compliance for the federal funds. There's also a code of conduct in the cafeteria area on bidding for those federal funds that they get there too. So there'll be two codes of conduct that I'll bring down, down the pipe a little later as we develop those. There was a couple for school facility this time, both of those were legal, and they had to do with the best available severe weather spots in each school. And along with the principals and the safety officials in town, they will review these, you know, we have a safety plan in every school, they'll review those and make sure that we have the best possible area for severe weather to make sure we move our students there. And that was in under school facilities. This was a minor one, but it was under transportation. If a student had a service animal, they're allowed to be on the school bus with them as long as they're not dangerous to other students. And a lot of times, they just go in, clean up the language in these things. Couple others I wanted to make you aware of, in instruction curriculum, we, they, it's 8.133, and actually in there it just lets you know that we got a four-year waiver again for no child left behind. And so that was inserted into our language, and I wanted to make you aware of that. A couple of more, compulsory attendance kicked in this year, moving from 16 to 18, and that is in our policy, is 9.122, and that moves from 16 to 18. And then there's another one on, it's 9.227, which in January of 2017, everyone in the school district has to be trained on recognizing child abuse and things that go along with them. So, and then there'll be a 90-day window once you're hired in order to get that training. So we'll be implementing that training over the next couple of years to make sure that we have everybody on board with that and be in compliance. And then the, the ones for us were mostly in our tobacco policy. We added the nicotine alternatives and the vapor products that are not allowed on campus, along with our tobacco policy as it stood. So we inserted that language to kind of tighten that up, wore that. And then also, our policy on earthquake drills need to be tightened up, and that was in the first 30 days of school, and also in the first 30 days once we come back in January, that we make sure that we have at least that drill during those few times. The language for all the other ones were in there, but that earthquake wasn't in there, and so we wanted to tighten it up. So I would recommend that we adopt these as KSBA wrote them, and be glad to take any questions if you have any.
Question from freshman year, Mr. Downs, on the compulsory attendance. Like, so let's say last year, a 17-year-old dropped out.
Right.
This year, are they grandfathered, in other words, they're not, they're not on the list?
Well, we're, we're required to make an attempt to get them back. So if they're, if they're not 18, and they have dropped out, then we are required to make contact as best we can and invite them back. And you know all the different alternative programs that we have. We try to get them back and plug them into one of those so that they can graduate. And so we, we only had a couple-
Yeah, three.
Three.
Okay.
We only had three that we're after right now, and we're just in the beginning process of trying to get them back, which will be a pretty tough job, but we're required to do that. And of course, nobody else can drop out until they get 18. But, you know, the presentation we did a while back, and all the different avenues that we have to try to keep them, and keep them engaged, we have all those running at high levels right now. Okay? All right? Thank you all very much.
Okay, we need to approve this, the board policy update. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item is the approval of our school activity fundraisers.
Yep, and our Red Book Regulations and Guidelines, just refresh your memory on, you certainly don't approve all the fundraisers, but those that are considered school-wide, and essentially what we consider school-wide is where we provide an opportunity for all students who want to participate, we consider that a school-wide. So we have two of those, and both of these are PTO fundraisers, one at the elementary school and primary, excuse me, that one is together, and then the middle school PTA is doing a sell as well, so.
Simply needs your approval back. Make a motion to approve.
You approve both fundraisers?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second, but I have a comment. I mean, it just, do they always have to be junky food?
Okay.
I mean, it's just-
That's a great-
I mean, does it have to be, you know, I mean, they might sell something else.
Yeah, and let me address that. The answer is, it's really hard to sell something else. But we have had a conversation with the elementary principal, and there's some consideration, don't take this down as gospel, but since you ask, I have presented him with a, with a possible plan that he's agreed to look at. Yes, the candy bars sell, and they sell well.
I like them too.
So, so the question was, what if we, do we even think that the KSB policy that you're gonna be seeing in the future is probably gonna have some suggestions and then eventually requirements that will be, you know, continue to change? So we're gonna go ahead and get a, get ahead of that game. This year, we're asking you to approve the candy bars, but he did agree that he would look at alternatives to candy bars. Now wait a minute, before you start shaking your head, he's not gonna give up the candy bars right away, we're gonna side-by-side run these, and then hopefully the alternatives will take over, the candy bar sells.
What if they, what if they, you know, buy kale chips, get the candy bar free? At least it introduces them to that.
That's a good start.
Well, it just, you know, to me, it's kind of like, we're trying to push nutrition, trying to limit that during the day, but then, and I know we limit how many of those fundraisers we can do, but it's like, if we have the moment, we're gonna jump in there.
But let's also, let's also remember, excellent point, well made, and you're right. But then also remember that we do have our health and wellness policy, and that we are trying to teach children to make good decisions. And remember, in real life, buying a candy bar outside of the school day is a very good possibility. So if we use that as a teaching moment, that in moderation, it's not the end of the world, but we definitely want you to eat healthy and push that. So the alternative could be, may not even be a food item, and hopefully the alternative will take over in given time. But that's the best plan we have right now, and I was pretty excited that we came up with that as a, for consideration for the PTO to look at.
So that was the second.
That was the second.
And the blue is open popcorn.
I saw that.
Now, is it okay if they have butter on their popcorn?
Organic.
Organic.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Our next item is approval for contract Nelson County Schools for hearing impairment services.
I'm gonna have Mr. Boston come and just give you a quick explanation on this. Anytime we get an opportunity to work with our school system here in our local community, we take advantage of that, and I think this saves everyone some money, and Mr. Boston's gonna talk to us about this.
It sure does. Looking forward to trying the kale chips at Keystone as we get in the bit. Like Mr. Holskow said, this is an opportunity to use some of the staff that Nelson County Schools already have for one student in particular that moved into our school district after rosters were already done and contracts were already approved over the summer. So this is a little lighter than typical, but we didn't know if they needed until school started. But we do have a need for a very, 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 very part-time hearing impaired teacher, and they have one. I've contacted their special ed director and their student attendant, and they're willing to contract her to us, just as they do their visually impaired teacher. So it has come to you today to ask for approval for this contract so we can begin getting this student all that he or she may need over at the primary school as quickly as we can. I'll be glad to answer any questions on it.
Now, Mr. Boston, we've done this often in sharing back and forth, they've contracted with us over the years as well, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discretion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Next, we have approvals for travel authorization for the Barstown High School Girl Soccer Team and the Barstown High School FBLA.
We have, as you know, you approve either out-of-state, overnight, or commercial travel, or a combination of those, the girl soccer. They do have a trip planned on September the 4th through the 6th, and there's a 5:1 ratio on chaperones, two males and two females, and they are requesting an overnight. And then over on your FBLA trip, Mr. Downs has referred to this as the trifecta in travel requests. They are out-of-state, they are overnight, and they are using a commercial travel. And that will be November the 12th through the 15th. Chaperones rate their eight students and two advisors, one male and one female chaperone. So we should be in good shape on all of those matters. And ask, did you approve the travel request if there's not any concern?
Where's the trip to?
Which, which ones?
The second one.
The second one, they are going to-
Charleston.
Charleston, Charleston, South Carolina, at the very top.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Great food. And I'll ask my usual question, that they are taking a bus? Have their credentials been checked in the safety?
They will be.
Okay.
Hey, you're talking about the soccer trip?
Soccer trip?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve travel authorization.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the travel authorization, both of them, both of them, the other one to Charleston. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, our next item is approval of a leave of absence request.
We do have a, one of our teachers requesting a return to T V, which will also involve the Family Medical Leave Act. All of that paperwork is attached and is in good order. Recommend that you approve that.
We have a motion.
It's a no.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Our next item is, we have a resignation.
Just make you aware of the resignation of Melissa Good, instructional assistant at Barstown Elementary School. That's all we have.
Also in your, in your packet or on your computer, you'll find the stat-based decision-making council minutes. And if there's not anything else, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned.